Good afternoon. This work session is called the Order of Mr. Strohman. All right, we've got two goals today. The first part is to discuss initiatives or programs for FY 2024. Using available statewide reserve balances and then we also want to take a look at some work that. In particular, the workforce division, but I think other staff members have worked on reviewing existing initiatives. So we'll start with the new initiatives and then we'll wrap things up with the with the review and discussion of what staff's been working on relative to reviewing. Existing initiatives as we get started, I just want to make sure I'm still correct on this. So as of yesterday, we've got about 3.1 million in TANF statewide reserve or commission reserves. About 12.98 million and we owe out about 3.61 million in ADL state leadership. That is correct.
And that's including the the balances in 2023 and our budget balance in 2024. Then 3.3 will move it in.
Okay, so and that includes, yeah, that includes balances from FY 23, 24 that are all available spent in FY 24, which starts in about. A month or so and everybody will recall that on the June 13 meeting, Chris. Stated to the commission that we should make decisions sooner rather than later. And so that we should meet soon. So here we are because I think he was absolutely right about that. I think there's a lot of benefits to looking at our available pots of money and. You know, it makes decisions now about how to use them rather than just sort of bringing one off projects throughout the year. So that's today's discussion. I have proposals. For three different components. One of them has multiple projects in it. I'm not probably going to talk about dollar amounts until all of us get our stuff on the table. So if you don't mind, I'll just move out with mine. I'll lay out what I'm talking about, then definitely want to hear from you guys on your ideas and then. We'll sort of figure out where the money rests with that. The first one that I wanted to talk about is. Related to a rural workforce strategy. I think that when when you look at the state, let's see that the 25 largest counties in the state have about 77% of the state's population. And it stands to reason that the we owe money, the tan of money. And the formula funds that go out to the boards tend to follow that population into those 25 counties. The flip side to that though is also true. There's about seven million people, which is 23% of the state's population that live. In the other 229 counties and the formula. Resources, meaning the stuff that just goes to the boards relative to the same formula that we get our money federally. They don't they don't end up providing a lot of money for the people in those 229 counties. It's understandable. That's not where the population is. But seven million people in our rural population is a population that's larger than a lot of state populations. It's still a sizable group of people and some of these communities. Have very bona fide economies and a lot of economic development going on. And I think. There are times when we see that the workforce development might not even be keeping up with the economic development. So. I started thinking about like, what kind of strategy would I want to see for our rural communities? And I committed that the paper here just as a way for us to kind of. Be on the same page literally as to what it is that I'm proposing here. So I have several recommendations relative to this. Let me just kind of go through those quickly. We'll come back and answer any questions if there's something specifically you want to. Want to delve into. First and foremost, I would recommend for consideration that we appoint a rural workforce working group. That's made up from different groups that have been doing a lot of work in this year. I'm thinking about groups like. Texas Midwest Community Network, the High Ground, Texas Rural Thunders, Texas Forest Country Partnership. There's several groups that have for. Two decades or more have been really focused on rural issues and I think. That they have a lot of information here and are really trying to help rural communities put together those resources. So. This this rural working group would include maybe some employer groups, maybe some community college groups, maybe some others. But I think that with some support from both OAI and the workforce division, I think this working group could really help. Help us understand what's going on in the rural areas and help us pinpoint our resource type of those areas. To kick that off, I would recommend for consideration that we convene a rural summit this fall. Where we bring together rural stakeholders from across the state. And talk through what are the workforce development challenges relative to rural Texas, but then also to begin identifying. Solutions to help address those challenges. And then a couple of specific. Monetary programs that I think we could put in place. That are a little bit copying some things we've done elsewhere and some of these are a couple of hybrids. The first I would propose would be a. Training lab that a rural workforce board could work in conjunction with either county or rural municipality. Municipalities of less than 25,000 population. Or the incorporated part of a county who had less that had less than 200,000 population. Which is a definition that I think TWC should establish for this this entire rural initiative. So municipalities. Less than 25,000 incorporated parts of a county of less than. 200,000 is just a general rural definition. I got that from statute. The 25,000 is a general government code. Part of the statute referring to rural communities. 200,000 seems to be what the Department of Agriculture uses for a lot of their programs. So that's where those in particular came from. These training labs would allow these partnerships and I would expect that each of the partners in the partnership. County or municipal government, community college or technical school and the workforce. Forge for that area would each contribute something to the learning lab. So for example. We would make money available that the workforce board could defray some costs. Maybe the county government offers up a building. Maybe the community college says, yeah, we've got a mobile welding unit. We can figure out there. Those are the types of partnerships that I'm thinking of. In addition to that, I would encourage us to consider. Providing some kind of priority scoring in the Upskill Texas program that we've been successfully operating. For these rural communities to maybe advance their. Particular applications relative to to training possibilities for employers. I don't necessarily have the best idea for that. I just it's worth considering if we want to do rural triggers. Similarly, but slightly different, somewhat in between these two, I'd say we would want to consider increasing. The available funding for the high demand job training program. And in doing that, I would also offer the the option to. Eliminate for boards qualifying as a rural board under that definition. That we get rid of the per board award cap. And that we allow training in any field on that order, TWC's in demand job list. As long as it's in a rural community. So basically not limiting them to the number of these they can do if they want to focus on rural communities. A last one. Relative to money would be to establish a fund to pay for costs associated. With credentials issued as a result of CT coursework. Seeing a lot of dual credit training in rural high schools, community colleges are doing that. I think we do a lot of training, but we don't always see that through to the available sort of certificate that they might need. Or some particular state provincial that they're trying to get. And I think if we could supplement that effort, I really think that we could. Capitalize on what's going on relative in high schools, both at the high school CT level, dual credit CT, maybe even something going on. The seventh part is simply just the the right kind of outreach outreach for these initiatives in the rural areas. So. Those are the seven things relative to the rural initiative. Their document pretty well summarized. This is of all, it gives us an opportunity to see what those are. I have two more sort of broad proposals. That I'll put out there and the question is if we could. Get your ideas on table and then I think a master discussion about those is probably well warranted at this point. This is a follow up on our middle skills gap initiative. Still a large issue, I think something like 270,000 of the. Job postings in the state in June were qualified as middle skills. That's like half the jobs that are on the list. Some middle skills jobs still very good. I think our Upskill Texas program, that pilot project. Has has performed very well. My understanding is there's about for every $4. In applications, we've got about $1 of available funding. So it's like, it's like, you know, four to one, so 20 to five, I think, if you look at our proportions. I think as a pilot program, I do think there's still some things that we want to know about that before we. We go all in and try to figure out what that funding level is, but I did want to make sure it was part of the discussion and I could definitely. See if there's available funds and no competing interests that we do consider some plan to increase funding for Upskill Texas. The Critical Occupations Apprenticeship has also performed well and I think. You know, I could see a path to getting additional funding for that. There's been some issues with the funding just because it comes from multiple funding streams and so. There may be a need to even shore that up in the short term and we can ask some questions about that. Again, I think middle skills, much like the rural initiative and certainly with some overlap. Both we owe statewide intent of funding could be used to pay for either exams or licensure credential assistance for people who are getting some critical training out there and then. I might ask staff really to take a look at this depending on what we do here today, but I think. Boards particularly with regard to middle skills, I think they're in a position to really take. And match up people who have these newly acquired credentials with the open jobs that are out there and I. Could definitely see us making some some statewide reserve funds available to boards to do even more matchmaking with folks that come. Into the door and hopefully some more outreach to get some more folks through the door. So those four items on the skills gap, but I'd like for us to consider. And then one last major category, this this is having to do with workforce development, economic development and where they overlap. I I'm still convinced based on all my experience that we're probably not positioned as well as. A lot of people would like to see us positioned in the conversation about both economic development and. Workforce development and how those kind of overlap in the state. There are a lot of people that say workforce development is economic development by person. I would would actually agree with them. But I think there's a lot of iterations of this depending on what community you're in. So three things I just wanted to get on the table for discussion here relative to this. My understanding is is boards use a lot of tools relative to data and other things that supplement our LMCI data from here. Our LMCI data from here is very good. But developers and and consultants that are consulting for site selection. They use a lot of different tools and we need to be able to use those tools and thought drill. It doesn't seem cost effective to me. For 20 boards to try to figure out those technological solutions. What I'm recommending here and my first recommendation is is that TWC figure out. What are the most common tools? How those tools are best used? TWC acquire those tools. And acquire whatever is necessary so that boards can use those tools. These are the types of reports that consultants and others use to make those types of decisions, particularly where workforce demographics are involved. And particularly where various training levels are involved. I think we can do a very good job of helping boards have. The types of things that will get them and keep them in that conversation. This will help us position our workforce solutions network as one of the leading experts on labor market insights. There are a lot of people paying money outside our system to get the same types of insights that we would deliver to them for no extra charge. They just pay for them and they move on. It's just the cost of doing business and I think we offer all of what they're paying for. But I think we have insights that they can't pay for because we have those and and we can definitely deliver those. The third recommendation with regard to this one would be on a targeted service delivery model so that. We are really focusing on the the issues. That are plaguing employers from hiring the people that they might need to hire. In other words, if you're a hospital and you're trying to hire nurses, like why are there not enough educators in your area? We we can do more to help them solve local problems. I think we're doing good here. Here, but I think we have an opportunity to move to great and I'd like for TWC to zero in on what is that targeted service delivery model so that those employers who have chronic workforce shortages. We can help them find the solution that's sustainable for them. And then again, like most things, the last thing I recommend is just that TWC staff should develop the type of outreach plan that would let this be successful. So that's a lot. I just poured a lot out. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm actually really interested in hearing. Richard DeRis, Mr. Trevino, like what your ideas are and then I'm really looking forward to a healthy conversation about those. So. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'm going to turn over to Mr. DeRis to lay out any ideas he might have. And get those on the table so then we can hear from Mr. Trevino.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. A couple of things. I don't have any discussion papers, but I want to have staff working on a few items. So a couple of things that I'll be working on. With the use of commission reserve dollars. There's something to make it movement that's out there. You guys have probably heard about that. That's something that I want staff to. To start looking into. That's actually allowing opportunities for. High school students to go into career opportunities. And so the make it movement is something of interest to me. I know they're polluting something in the central Texas area and will probably be trying to take that statewide and then probably across America at some point, but it'll start here in Texas. Secondly, there's a mobile unit initiative called Be Pro, Be Proud that's out there. Some of the boards in the Dallas area, I believe. Are looking at this this model and. Probably want a discussion paper centered around that to see if there's a role for us to play, not owning the vehicle, but. Maybe the programs that are centered around a vehicle as such, again, driving opportunities for employers. Here in Texas to gain a valuable workforce and so that that's of interest. As well, the internship initiative, I'll be wanting to double down. I think we've had about two, two and a half years of. Of good solid work in that space and there's a lot more that can be done. And so I want a deeper dive. Around that our Texas interns unite initiative, our Texas. Internship challenge initiative and the like and again employers feeding into that space will be something that that I'll. I want to work on. Lastly, two or three other items. Esports, I'm talking with the governor's office on some of their initiatives. They have a film and music. Office and it's gaming division, I believe that Chairman, you may have ran at one point as well. Over in that that work, but that's. Becoming very prominent in the in the world, but Texas has an opportunity to really lead in that space. And I think the agency has done some things in the esports arena. At one point, I want to see what that is, see some of the results of that and make sure that we're not missing a mark or missing the boat. Around that. And so esports will be something of interest, should move. And then rounding it off with second chance, Braves conference, different things along those lines. To your point of employers needing access to a workforce. Of people with credentials. I this past weekend had an opportunity to be with the the guys in Lockhart, Texas. At one of the minimal facilities and women, a thousand women inmates there. About 47 of them receiving credentials in collaboration with the program. That's at ACC and they were receiving credentials associated with logistics, with welding. All of those things and this is a valuable workforce for employers if fitting the the right way. And so there's an interest to me. Along those lines and making sure that employers are aware of both the tax opportunities as well as the. The workforce that's coming from that space is of interest. And then last, on the small business side, I'm not sure exactly. What what I want to crystallize here, we're working with governor's office in the small business program. They have small business employers. As relates to internship opportunities as it relates to making sure that they're trained up. Getting getting solid in in that area is something of interest and that kind of ties in with some of the rural initiatives that you talked about. Mr. Chairman, around rural, the rural communities. I've had a session with rural employers and so I've. We had rural and for internship opportunities for rural employers, game changing type of discussions when you look at the rural community. When you have a kid in a position to come home for the summer, make $20 an hour. Where the company is paying about $10 when you use a program that the higher education coordinating board. Has as Texas works. And so we have game changing opportunities that creates win win situations. For those businesses and those individuals, both the employer and employee. And just continuing to work on making sure that we're bringing the worlds of workforce, economic development and education together as best as possible to. Keep moving, moving the ball. But those are the five or six, one, two, three, four, five, six items that are adventurous to me in that space.
Hey, I have a couple of discussion papers, but it's dealing with the same. It's dealing with the foster youth. In my. Prior job in law enforcement, I always saw the. The need for help with foster youth and I don't think it's. Still been focused as as it should be or it could be. DFPS had reported in June 2023 that 10,850 children were in foster care. 2,368 were in foster care ages between 14 and 17. Foster youth and former foster youth expressly find it difficult to identifying services and assistance. That they are eligible for. And the Texas Veterans Network is extremely successful in helping veterans. With advanced training and referral and finding those jobs. And we want to kind of use that model. To do something for the foster youth that are getting ready to transition out and and hit that cliff as they say. So about 1,500 network building events. This is the Texas Veterans Network. They have 1,500. Network building events, over 250 training and options and workshops. And over 84,000 referrals with 48,000 and duplicated vets served. And we want to kind of replicate that to reach the. Have a reach service for foster youth. And I didn't know we were talking about money, but I put that in there so y'all can just see it. But this is what I would like to propose. That you know that we would like for staff to bring forward the formal initiative. For Texas Foster Youth Network designed to support the development of a statewide network as described in the discussion paper presented today. Once that initiative is bought back to the commission for consideration and then y'all can just see that. I didn't mean to throw that. In there right now, but that's. Didn't want to get ahead of everybody, but that's what it is. So everybody can see that and then we can discuss that, but. The second one dealing also with the foster youth is to have a Texas conference for foster youth. Again, the same statistics from DFPS, they reported in June of 2023 that. 2,368 youth are in foster care ages 14 to 17 and not including substantive care and. Only 51% of the former foster youth. Completed high school or got a GED. So the other ones never, never completed high school or got a GED. So it is important to reach the foster care youth before they exit so that they can receive guidance. And helping navigate the challenges and barriers because they don't really know. What they need to do or they go to do that. So I'm proposing for a pilot conference for foster youth. To have maybe 200 attendees. It'll be a full day. With keynote speakers, workshops, and they have student panels. Service expos to highlight the services that they are eligible for. And again, I'm sorry I put a cost, but that's anticipating about 65,000 using real estate funds. And probably within the next school year of 2023 to present this. So, you know, I would just like to bring that. Texas Conference Foster Youth Pilot Initiative is described in the discussion paper that's, you know. To have that proposed here so that we can discuss that and, you know, maybe either bring it up to the next meeting or whatever, whatever y'all see fit. But those are the only two papers I had.
All right. Corey, does your crew have anything relative to 2024 new initiatives?
Thank you all. Provided us with a lot to think about. Yes.
I just. What's going on? Okay, so. What I came prepared to do today was to kind of hash out the dollars and. Try to figure out how much money to put toward everything. And and ask staff to move out with that. I have some dollar amounts for mine that are. Is what I really kind of think that they would cost. I'm happy to share with staff. Mr. DeRis, though, you. Do you have a dollar idea in mind for these these ideas that you had? Here's what I'm thinking because we brought this, we should have. Mr. Strohman, proof that we do not collaborate outside of these meetings. We brought this in three different ways. Write that down somewhere for somebody to see. We brought this information in three different ways and we can spend the next little bit deliberating through those. Asking questions, asking, you know, for dollar amounts and we can cobble something together. But it does occur to me, which is what I probably would be inclined to do. But it occurs to me sitting here watching three people that I admire greatly. Just for. If you count Chris. Scribbling furiously on this information that they're getting. It might be better that we kind of. We kind of let the pros try to figure out what these program parameters might look like. What's the most appropriate fund for the money to come from? Let the chief financial guy say, you know, how much money is available so that we don't make a decision that we have to just go back and amend later. So. Not necessarily what I thought we might come out of here with today, but not, I'm not, I'm not in any ways bothered. By the result. So what I'm proposing is is that. We would let staff take the information that they just received. Which will require me to kind of read into the record the dollar amounts that I had envisioned for what I was thinking about. Let staff crunch through those, keep it in mind, available dollar resources, available staffing resources. What the timelines look like for getting some things done. And then come back to us quickly. Not today, but quickly with a. What's the word for that? Where they've taken and put it all together in in one place, a comprehensive list of what that's going to look like. And how those dollar amounts fit and then bring that to us in a commission meeting and we can go through that and consider that. So. I'm thinking that's the best way to get this tied up in an orderly way. If you disagree, like, let's disagree. You won't offend me. We can pursue this any way you want to, but. It just occurs to me that if. Both workforce and OAI staff can look at this, understand how they would staff it, understand how much dollars we've been spending. They can put that together in a completely comprehensive package and bring that back for us. We can move some dollar amounts around then if we want to. It's always our prerogative, but. I want to have like a really good discussion about this and I thought I thought all three of us. Did a good job of laying out what we were interested in. Does that seem reasonable or did you have another expectation today?
As far as I'm concerned, no, I mean, I didn't really have any expectation because this was my first time. But you know, I wanted to make sure that. That we got the discussion out and 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 stuff. So I'm happy about that. So as long as we can continue that.
I think that would be the plan. It's is for us to let them. Flush this out. Tell us how they would implement it. I mean, I've given some broad guidelines here. You've done the same. By the way, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, but Texas Veterans Network, it does work exceedingly well and it's a it's a smart one to copy. I really think that program's done very well, but. Let them tell us how they would operate it and give us some reasonable expectation on cash. Mr. DeRis, do you some?
Yeah, 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 it makes sense. The items that I I've mentioned here are ones that will will go with. Portman's team, workforce vision and the team work on the discussion paper around it from our office and the like. And so. Then coming up with the dollar amounts around it makes sense and then we'll be told. then coming up with the dollar amounts around it makes sense. And then we'll be told what you can and can't do. It makes sense. And so yeah, short of the money that's outlaid or outlined, if the requests are not coming, you know, they're coming to a point where we're bumping each other, where this is dollar nine, I want, and you can't, and there's not anything left over. That's where we need to kind of talk through from that standpoint, and make sure that we're in a position. We don't have to, but we, if we want to try to support the programs that are, we think are worthwhile, then kind of having that conversation makes sense to me.
All right. So my description of the programs that I have recommended are in the three papers that I submitted. Commissioner Trevino submitted two papers that were very clear to me about what his interests were here. Mr. Deversen is going to work with staff to flesh out his ideas. Clearly, you have a concept of what you want to do. So I think you can flesh that out. I'm doing this just so it's on the transcript later. Commissioner Trevino has has suggested that he wants four million dollars to be a starting place for his foster youth network. He has also suggested sixty-five thousand dollars for his foster youth conference. I'm going to read off the list of dollar amounts that I had thought about relative to the different programs that I outlined for the purposes of the discussion. So on the rural initiative, the Rural Strategy Working Group and Summit, seventy-five thousand dollars would be my recommendation on that. Again, staff's going to have to work through these. They're going to have to make all this fit. The Rural Strategy Training Labs, one million dollars. The Rural Strategy High Demand Job Training Increase, one million dollars. Rural Strategy C T Credentials, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Rural Strategy Outreach Effort, I put about a hundred thousand dollars. There's other ways to get to that. An increase for Upskill Texas, I had put it as a recommendation of five million dollars. Critical Occupations Apprenticeship, two million dollars. Most Skills Licensing Credentials Effort, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then on the Middle Skills Board Connections, the Economic Development Labor Market Data Technology Enhancements, the enhanced projections for boards and the in-demand training, specialized employer outreach and training relative to the economic development initiative. Staffs just have to tell us what those things would cost. So particularly those board connections and those technology things, I would just ask you to make a recommendation. So those were, those were where I was envisioning those programs. So Commissioner Deversen, when he's working with you, will give you I think some idea of what he was thinking. So when all this comes back, bring us all these initiatives with some idea of how they would operate. And then your best estimate for a dollar amount for that initiative. Probably want to tell us why and use up all the money, because it occurs to me looking at this. A E L, there may be things about that I don't understand or know, and those funds may be available for something I wasn't even thinking of that. So I think that's why this is a good thing. So you'll bring back all the initiatives outlined today, how they'll operationalize with a staff recommended dollar amount. Bring that to a commission meeting. Commission will take that up as an item. I suspect there will be additional discussion. It could even be amendments, but that'll be a good story to come through. Does that, is there any objection to us moving out in that manner?
Mr. Chairman, what was the total amount? Do you know what yours total?
My total now is nine million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Thirteen. And so Commissioner Trevino's is about four point six five, about four million, so thirteen. Chris, the the numbers that we have over here, the W O A statewide, that's twelve million in commission reserve, and we have about thirteen million there. And then three million in TANF, and then three point six in A E L state leadership. But again, I like the chairman will need to kind of figure out what plays in that space as well. So, so it sounds like about thirteen million in kind of requests that's out there enough to kind of fund some things here. So.
Correct. And as, as staff go back and look at it, they'll have to see what you know, which is, which can be funded, which
Which area? Yeah, yes.
You know, we have to treat the dollar west. They're going to get the treat dollars discreetly. It's like high. But what activities you can do with them is more like a bin diagram. You may be able to spend one, one activity can be funded with both programs possibly. Or it could be one activity, you know, and be funded with one.
Okay. All right.
So if there's no objection, Mr. Sherman, that's, I found you in the crowd finally. That's what we're asking staff to do. Chris was very clear with the commission that he wants us to make these decisions sooner rather than later. So we'll, we'll keep that timeline in mind. Have I overplayed that yet? So soon, whenever that, whenever that is. I know we've got a lot going on. All right, gentlemen, the second part to today's work session. I have, since I arrived here at T O C, been asking all executive staff that I come in contact with for a lot of information about performance of their programs, individual performance of their programs. And I will tell you from the time period of twenty nineteen through the end of twenty twenty-one, I've got very little information back from anybody at this agency regarding the performance of our programs. And I have to honestly say, we asked for a report again on really a review of all of our programs and how they were. And I was, I was honestly so impressed with the product that came back. I actually had to call people and tell them I was impressed with the product that came back. This is a very good piece of staff work. It was very thorough with some things. There are some things that can't be done right now that have to be done in the future, and it's very clear as to why. And so let me just open this next part of this discussion with my compliments to staff for being very much as good steward of all the resources that T O C has been given and taking time to do an absolutely phenomenal job in getting us started down a road where we can truly measure the impacts of our program. Barring any comment from the other commissioners, I'll turn it over to you and your crew to kind of go through this with us, what we're looking at and tell us where things are headed. But before that, Commissioner Deversen, you have
I was going to echo your sentiments exactly. And I've shared that with the staff as well, the work that they put into this and the work that the document gets done. I said thank you to the team over and over for, for this, this work.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's a professional organization that is moving very well. So I'm very, very happy to be here.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. You know, our current case management system does not track any of the statewide initiatives. So staff in this room have been for years gathering information in a relatively archaic way and putting it together. The new case management system has modules for non-board grantees to be able to track that, which will automate a lot of this. But I appreciate Leslie and the team, there's a lot of you, so shouldn't say names, in pulling this level of detail so that you can have quarterly updates on any grant you would like to see. And then for budgets, the budget process every year to be a lot more streamlined. The posted today in the notebook and what has been briefed to you all is a summary document that I think will be helpful. There are, your staff have all been briefed with probably hundred different pages with a level of granularity on each of these initiatives grouped by type, the type of deliverables that we've written into each of the grants, the outcomes that we've seen so far, the budgeted amount, the expenditures. For the purposes of this exercise in this work group, this team looked at all of the existing initiatives, and we did like maybe a three-year, a three-year look back and looked at a number of things that we thought were going to be priority. Leslie, I'm going to summarize these, and I'll hand it off to you to high level, go over the, some of the findings of our research. We, we looked at these from a number of different angles to see what we thought would be of value to the commission and to us as we administer these grants and the outcomes that we expect to see. Number one is it required by statute? If so, we need to keep improving it, but we need to make sure that we either go to our legislators or find, find a change that we could make. Does it still address a relevant issue? Do the activities reflect the needs of the target populations that we know that our workforce system is intended to serve? Do we provide grant funds for other similar initiatives? How can we combine those? You all have been supportive of us trying to look at different youth initiatives, for instance, and find ways to hear those differently so that we're not doing smaller grants, awards for a number of different initiatives, where we could lump those together differently. Are other organizations or agencies providing the same or similar programming? If so, how can we leverage that, maybe change the way we're operating? What are some of the negative consequences associating with, associated with eliminating the initiative, in which case we look to change those? What are the achievements, feedback, pre and post survey, pre and post surveys, and the deliverable outcomes we've seen in the grants? And how should that inform our future discussions? And is this still considered to be high priority and high value based on what we're seeing in the Texas workforce? And of course, everybody in this room is in touch with some part of the Texas workforce, and we're all collaboratively listening. Mary and I talk a lot about what she's seeing from employers, what we're hearing on the job seeker side or from boards. And so that, those are the questions that we ask ourselves as we went through the analysis. We categorized a few of these, and we can go over that to give you an idea of what we will be doing as we prepare the next round of funds. And we, we present a budget to you in the future for these initiatives.
So based on, based on the nine questions that are in the executive summary, along with the historical expenditures and the performance data, staff made recommendations in seven categories. And Courtney has mentioned those to you today. I just want to briefly do a high level of each category and hit some of the initiatives that, that we've looked at. The first, the first category is to continue the initiative as is. When we did the analysis on these, there's not a recommend, a recommendation from staff to change anything. And the next category is further analysis required. There are nine initiatives in here. The first six are youth initiatives. And our recommendation, we would like to evaluate the merits of consolidating our current youth initiative and also adding any new initiatives that would create one large initiative. We envision this to exist in potentially one or two R F As under which the funding, the eligibility, periods of performance, performance measures, and also reporting will be made uniform. And those initiatives are the Texas Science Engineering Fair, Governor's Science Champions Academy, Governor's Summer Merit Program, Youth Robotics, Camp Code, and then esports listed there. There is also a note that it is a pilot, and it's a new pilot for us. So we currently do not have the data to do the analysis for that one. The next category is to revise the initiative. There are three. In this category, externship for teachers, as the commission earlier approved this year, will be expanding this to, to include A E L providers and also Institute of Higher Education. For Foster Youth Transition Centers, this is one that we would like to take a look at. We have eighteen entities. We would like to look at the program and involve greater employer, employer engagement for our foster youth participants and also have stronger work connection during transition, which goes along the lines of Commissioner Trevino and what he's proposed. We also have pre-apprenticeship bridge, and we would like to consider a joint strategy with Texas Apprenticeship Division to develop D O L, T W C, and A E L quality pre-apprenticeship models across the board service areas. The next category is to amend the initiative budget. We reviewed the historical expenditures for college credit for heroes, and based on the demand, this initiative supports a budget of seven hundred thousand. The budget is currently at one point four million. If we did make any recommendation and that was later approved, this would be reflected in the FY twenty-five budget. We hire vet campaign. This was amended in twenty twenty, for the twenty twenty-four budget to be reduced to two thousand dollars. The next category is discontinue the initiative. We have the virtual reality career exploration pilot. This was a one-time initiative for the purchase of goggles. That was successfully completed, and therefore we would, we would not have further distribution to the boards. The I T registered apprenticeship, this is a commission initiative that's funded with Leo and statewide and apprenticeship expansion funding. Currently, there are no apprenticeship expansion funds available, and the I T industry needs can, may be addressed with other existing funds. The A E L employer engagement. Because these services can be provided by A E L grantees under the core A E L funding in a five-year cycle, it's recommended to terminate this initiative due to the short timeline from startup to the grant end. And then the last one in this category is that family math literacy. This initiative concludes in October of twenty-three, and there are no plans to renew. The next category is new initiatives to be evaluated. We currently have five in this category, and also I would include esports. These are initiatives that have recently started in FY twenty-three. Therefore, there is no performance data at this time. This includes Critical Occupations Apprenticeship, Healthcare Registered Apprenticeship, the Training and Demand Employment Supplies, and Rapid Incumbent Worker Training. And the last category is the initiatives that are required by statute. And there are nine listed there. This just means that there's a requirement, either there could be a dollar amount or the requirement that it has to be done.
With the exception of the six new initiatives that are under evaluation, has an FY twenty-four funding decision been made for everything else on this list? But there's a couple that we discontinued because we always intended to discontinue them. All the rest of them have had a funding decision made for them. So anything you do relative to a change would really be geared toward FY twenty-five?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Other questions are coming?
Yeah. No.
Anything else?
Nope. I was going to on the further analysis required, which was included the Texas Science Engineering, the Governor's Science Academy, Governor's Summit. Will that funding be awarded first come, first served for qualified applicants? Or will it be like a score-based type program so that enough funding, we would know if enough funding would remain throughout the year or later in the year?
So for the youth initiative, the commission kind of proved to fit all the youth funding into one budget, one item. And currently, the way we have it set up is that each youth initiative has a baseline amount based on the previous year's funding. And then our other previous years, the expenditures, one start. And based on that, that would be acceptable for when R F A is published. If we end up getting less applicants and we don't award this whole budget, that money would basically go back into the line item.
Okay.
And then we did continue to go through each of those R F As for all the years. There's a certain schedule that we have. We typically will say those that have, that historically have not been awarded the full amount. There at the beginning of this schedule for this whole year, and those that typically have more applications than what we have budgeted for or scheduled for the end of the year. So if as money is left there, we're, we're able to spend more funds at the end of the year, like for example, you provide, you know, we always have more applications, and we have funding, and we're able to spend those dollars for that. And we would consider that as each initiative goes through, through the R F A schedule.
Okay. So then I guess my next question would be, would there be like the deadline to submit it for an R F A for the different programs? Or would what would be the timeline for receiving the process or processing for the R F A? Then.
Under what we're talking about.
Correct. Yes, with one, one initiative.
It would really depend on logistics. We haven't looked at that completely yet, and how that would work. What we envision is potentially doing one, two R F As and laying out different tracks for applicants who apply. for applicants to apply for. So there is a potential that we would get everything at, you know, one time depending on all the R F As there.
Okay.
We would make those decisions.
Okay. So then we could probably get like, the offices could get like a quarterly reporting done when to see if the funds were sufficient throughout the year then, right?
Correct. And currently, we are on doing a quarterly report for all grants. So we already do a quarter split and are already updating data and that, but soon you'll be seeing that.
I'm sorry, each office.
Thank you, thank you, Liz.
Okay. Anything else?
So moved.
Second. The move outside of that, that we've done the work session and it is in charge.
We don't know what we're doing.